Good afternoon. This work session will come to order. Welcome, everyone. I'm Colin Nash, Council President. The mayor is attending a memorial service for Tracy Andrus and will not be joining us today. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willett.
Here.
All present.
Looks like first item on our agenda day, interim budget changes presented by Eric. Eric, take it away.
Thank you very much, Council President, members of the council. We have eight interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon. The first item is for ten operation specialist positions at the airport. A new TSA security regulation will go into effect in September of this year, requiring that all aviation workers be screened before accessing secured areas of the airport. This regulation mandates around-the-clock security checks and would be a change from the current system where workers can access secured areas by scanning employee cards at unstaffed access points. There'd be no request for personnel budget in fiscal year 24 as current year vacancy savings can cover the cost of the new employees. However, the cost for these positions would be built into the forthcoming fiscal year 25 proposed budget scheduled for release next month. Our second item is a budget-neutral appropriation for the celebration of the Boise Depot's 100th anniversary. This project will involve a projection to be seen on the outside of the building during the anniversary celebration in April 2025. The funding for this project would be supported from the already budgeted percent-for-art allocation. The third item is a $90,000 revenue-neutral appropriation increase to create content for and manage the design fabrication and installation of 16 interpretive signs in the River Myrtle Old Boise Urban Renewal District. These signs will serve as a self-guided walking tour and provide users with a fuller understanding of Boise's history. The cost of these signs would be reimbursed by CCDC. The fourth item is a $1.2 million appropriation increase to migrate the city's permit management system from an on-prem to a cloud-based solution. This conversion is necessitated by the vendor recently announcing its end-of-life date of July 2025. After this date, the vendor will no longer offer functionality and security updates for the on-prem system. Ongoing costs associated with this conversion will be built into the forthcoming fiscal year 25 proposed budget. Next is a $50,000 adjustment to replace the restroom at Military Reserve due to an automobile crashing into it and destroying it. The $50,000 cost will be paid for by the risk management fund and is anticipated that the risk management fund will try and recover these costs from the driver who caused the damage. The sixth item is for a revenue-neutral increase for the purchase of a mobile command unit for the police department. This increase, which is attributable to escalation, cost escalation, will be supported by increased transfers from the Development Impact Fee Fund. The next item is a $40,000 revenue-neutral item to support an art port activity in the Water Renewal Fund. This project would install universal mounting plates in the linen block that would allow for an ongoing rotation of temporary sculptures. The initial cost would be reimbursed by CCDC while ongoing funding would be provided by the Water Renewal Percent-for-Art Program. Finally, our last item is a $50,000 revenue-neutral appropriation to recognize a Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth Climate Action Fund grant. This grant would provide funding to administer a micro-grant fund program that engages youth in designing, producing, and overseeing urgent climate solutions. The acceptance of this grant was previously approved by the City Council on May 7th of this year. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions the council might have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before we do that, no questions, just one comment here. There's a lot of really great stuff on here. The Youth Climate Action Grant, I think, is absolutely unbelievable. And as we're trying to figure out a time where we want to give our youth and our teens an opportunity to have an impact and direction and how they can do it, this is such a cool program that allows them to have access to some funds to do that. There's also some really important things on here that are items that are sort of out of our control that we need to make sure that we're continuing to invest in, like our IT movement. And if we don't continue to do these things, you know, we're going to be paying the price in the long run. So some of these items, they're bigger budget items. Even the one with our airport, you know, we see a bigger budget item, but we see also an ability to operate more efficiently in a way that kind of best serves the city going forward. So I think that these all make a whole lot of sense. And I just wanted to, you know, applaud all the staff that's worked on all of these to put these together. They're smart. There are things that we need to do, and some of them are really fun as well. So thank you for the hard work.
Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on that, I'm super excited about the depot and the light show on that. So I hope everybody marks April of next year on their calendars because it really is a significant time for our city. And we're such a young state and a young city that these kind of milestones are pretty rare. So it's exciting.
Mr. Mayor, I may have approval of the interim budget changes.
Second, will the clerk call the roll?
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willett.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Eric. All right, next up, we have a presentation on State Street on some changes between 8th and 14th. Looks like we have Bree introducing Tom, yep, from ACHD.
Good afternoon. Like Mr. Mayor said, I'm here to introduce Tom Laws, the Planning Manager at ACHD. He has been overseeing the work on this State Street project from 8th to 14th. They just kicked off the public outreach for this. It'll go through the end of the month. So Tom is here today to share the concepts that are going out to the public. We can solicit any questions or feedback you have, but he'll be presenting to the ACHD Commission the results of the public outreach next month on June 12th. June 28th, I'm so sorry. So at that time, we would hope to have a recommendation from him or for him on the city's alternative. So you can ask any questions now, but we can certainly follow up afterward if you have any after this presentation.
Mr. President.
Yep.
Just a quick question. I think we maybe have a joint meeting with ACHD on June 17th. Is that confirmed? Do we know?
I don't think ACHD has confirmed the date yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Tom.
Thanks, Bree, and thank you, council members, for having me. For the record, Tom Laws, the Planning Manager with Ada County Highway District. And just maybe to clarify, we'll be coming back to the City Council, I think it's on June 13th, and then the last Wednesday of June, we'll be going to the ACHD Commission. Hopefully, we can have a joint meeting to find another update in there as well. But this presentation is really just an informational item, wanted to give you kind of an update since we last met at the last joint hearing. And right now, we're in a really busy time. We're in the middle of our second public comment period that started May 9th and will runs through the 23rd. So the next few slides, I'll go ahead and share with you kind of a quick update, but then really dive into what those alternatives are that we're proposing to the public. So just a reminder, we're talking State Street from 8th to 14th. So starting with the east, this is really at the Capitol, going through the heart of the YMCA, the New Block 68, 69 Development, Boise High, and then continuing on west to DK Donuts, Fancy Freeze area. The goal, really first and foremost, the pavement has severely deteriorated in this section of the State Street corridor, as you can see by these images. So the goal is to perform essential pavement maintenance and really improve that safety for all users along the corridor. We're not doing this alone. We have an interagency team that we've been working with from the start that includes myself and Cody Holman, a senior project manager from ACHD. Bree and Tessa have been phenomenal partners from the city. We also have Zach Peatmeier from CCDC and Stephen Hunt from Valley Regional Transit on the interagency team. Kittleson and Associates are also our consultants that are helping us with this project. At a high level, so we kicked this off in August or fall of 2023, and it really started, one, with an existing conditions analysis. You know, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses of the corridor today? As well as an initial public comment period where we really asked for feedback from the stakeholders, from the public of what's going well, what can be approved along the corridor. We took all that information and have since crafted three, two or three alternatives that I'll go into in the next few slides that are out now for the public comment period. Our goal is to wrap that up over the next month or so, come back to you, come back to VRT to get formal recommendations from your elected bodies, and then go to the commission at the end of June and again at the end of July for a formal adoption. Broader, so the concept study, we aim to wrap up this summer, as I mentioned, and we really want to be able to roll immediately into design. So that will occur the end of 2024 and really all of the year 2025. And the goal is, come January 2026, we'll be able to start construction of this project. So as a reminder, with that first public comment period, we really had one theme that rose far and above all the others. And that was the desire from stakeholders, from business owners, from members of the public to really focus on trying to improve the crossings across State Street at each one of those key intersections. The other four that are highlighted here, two through five, they were really tied for second. But as I mentioned, they were far, far and below that need or desire to make crossings safer on state. And those four include providing bike facilities, improving the existing sidewalks that are there today, maintaining or improving existing traffic congestion, as well as providing dedicated left-turn lanes. So the public survey number two is live right now. And on our webpage, achdidaho.org-state-8-14, in addition to what I'll be showing you over the next few slides, there are full corridor renderings of what the proposal alternatives will look like, as well as about an eight, nine-minute video that has 3D fly-throughs of each different concept. And with those, it'll have different descriptions along the way as well. So when you approach an intersection, what that feel will look like, what that would look like as you are moving through it. So we really came down to two major alternatives, one with a four-to-five lane cross-section and one with a three-lane cross-section. The four-to-five is similar to what you see today. However, we're expanding the five-lane a little further east. And then the three-lane is looking at one with a shared youth pathway along the corridor and one with the protected bike facility, similar to what's on 11th or what's to come on 8th, north up to the Co-op. However, across all of these alternatives, we're looking first and foremost with that full payment rebuild, as well as stormwater improvements. All three will be adding full signals at 12th and 14th Streets. All of the typical improvements with the pedestrian experience from leading pedestrian intervals at those intersections, accessible pedestrian signals, as well as improving the ADA ramps and crossings. And then we're also looking and working closely with Bree and Tessa to add center medians as well as access management at key locations. But here, the next three slides, I'll just kind of walk through what these proposals look like. So this first one with Concept A, that four-to-five lane, as I mentioned, it's really similar to what you have today between 11th and 8th Streets. So the Capitol, then all the way approaching the Y with that four-lane cross-section, we are looking at removing parking along the entire corridor. And so with a few of these blocks, there are several spots that we're able to take that space and then either add it to the buffer space, the street trees, or increase the sidewalk width. As you approached the 11th through 14th section, we're then widening that out to five lanes. And really, the main point of that is to add that center turn lane. Within the existing conditions, we did a crash analysis and by far, a lot of the teams, a lot of the themes were tied to trying to make that left turn from State Street onto any of the streets. We saw really three main themes there. The first being, you're sitting in that travel lane, waiting to make the turn, and the car behind you might not be paying attention, and you get rear-ended. The second would be that you're sitting there trying to make the turn, and you shoot a gap, but you mistime it, and we actually have T-bones occurring. Or the third, that the driver is so focused on trying to make that turn that they don't pay attention to the bicycle and pedestrian realm at all, make that movement and end up hitting a walker or biker. And so that's really the key point here of trying to add that center turn lane. And then the image on the right is just an example, looking 11th to the east. So you can see kind of the YMCA there on the north side, the future YMCA in that gray block on the south, and then what that corridor could look like. For B1, when really with both concepts, we're able to, and the intent is to take one of those travel lanes and then move it over to that pedestrian and bicycle realm. So here you have one lane in both directions, that dedicated center turn lane, which will have a dedicated phasing on all the intersections. And then with that additional space, adding it to the pedestrian realm, the bicycle realm on either side, more like a shared youth path or mixed path. In this case, also, we're looking at a dedicated bus pullout at 11th Street, and I have a slide further on that can talk a little more detail about that as well. With B2, this one, as I mentioned, is really tied similar to what you'd see on the 11th Street bikeway or the future connection north on 8th Street, north of State, where we have those three lanes, one in either direction, the left turn lane in the center. But we'll have a raised and protected bike facility moving on both sides of State Street, and then that buffer space and pedestrian realm as well. And then with transit, we've been working really closely with VRT because we know that, you know, State Street is the best-in-class corridor with the goal of 15-minute intervals in the future. And so we're looking at what you see both sandwiched on the right and left side, just your traditional in-lane stops, but then also potentially a transit bus pullout that allows the bus to no longer queue in the travel lane, have those vehicles back up behind it. But then with signal timing and other adjustments, able to move freely back into that travel lane. Also, in working with VRT, with all of the alternatives, we'll be looking at far-lane or far-sighted stops at the 11th Street intersection. Additionally, I just want to throw out that what we've been doing and what we continue to look at over the next few weeks are trying to have clear and easy ways to understand what these trade-offs look like. As we've discussed in previous presentations, the main challenge with this corridor is we only have an 80-foot cross-section. So with that 80 feet, what are we able to do? And really, it seems like we can either do a few things very, very well, or we can do everything okay or pretty well. And so that's what we're trying to show here. And really, what we're seeing is with all these alternatives, trying to find that balance between, you know, safety being up there in the top, but, you know, addressing congestion, addressing that free flow of movement for vehicles, but also providing that safe space for bikes and walkers as well. So I mentioned the public survey kicked off last week, and this is just a slide. It's not all-inclusive, but just some of the outreach that we've done to date and what we're planning in the future. So yesterday, we were tabling at the YMCA from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Went to the VRT Executive Board last week. And actually, right now, we have several stakeholder meetings at the Cathedral of the Rockies. We wrapped up one at 3 o'clock today, and we'll be back this evening from 5:00 to 7:00. Would encourage all of you, if you're interested, please, please come. We'll have one specifically targeted to the business owners and property owners along the corridor from 5:00 to 6:00. And then from 6:00 to 7:00, we're inviting all of our advisory committees. So our bicycle advisory committee, our pedestrian advisory group, and our ADA advisory committee to come learn more about the project and provide their thoughts and feedback. Several other advisory committee meetings, stakeholder meetings throughout the next two weeks. And then, as Bree mentioned, our hope would be, once we've compiled all that data, we'd come back to you, we'd come back to VRT to look for your recommendations and your thoughts about what we should proceed with. The goal would be to wrap those up that first or second week of June and near the end of June, come all back together with the ACHD Commission to vote on a recommended alternative. And so really, that's, as I mentioned, the next step. So we'll be continuing with this outreach. We'll be back to you. In between there, we're going to huddle up together as that interagency team with your staff, with CCDC and VRT, and then hope to have a formal adoption in July. Lot of information there, but I'm happy to stand for any questions, and thank you for having me once again.
Counsel. Counsel member.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Tom. Thank you so much for the information. I just had a couple of questions. One, just for terms that I'm not familiar with. The first one is that leading pedestrian interval.
Council President Nash and Council Member Corliss, great, great question. And so really, that it ties into that desire and that need to make crossings safer. And so what the leading pedestrian interval does is gives a little additional time for the pedestrian to cross before any of the signals change. And so we have it in several intersections downtown already, but you'll have all the lights red, and then the white pedestrian light will turn on for three to five seconds before any of the other lights go. And what that allows is the pedestrian to get out there into the street a little more visible before the green light for the vehicle movement occurs.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I also really appreciate the presentation. I like to see the interaction between the different interagencies right up front. I think it's going to lead to a much better outcome in the future. I'd love to know is what other methods you guys use to engage the public? It sounds like you're doing, I saw the meeting at the YMCA and then tonight with Cathedral of the Rockies. Are there other methods that you guys have found that have been very useful?
So yes, great, great question. And really, we're trying to cast a really broad net. So in addition to this, we had postcards that went out for really kind of the downtown radius, everyone along the corridor as well. We went to the door-to-door last Friday, knocking on all of the business owners, the property owners along the corridor. We also, when the survey went live and our webpage went live, reached out to key stakeholders across the downtown area that are really going to be affected by this project as well. And so, for example, working with St. Luke's or the Boise VA, we shared that information with them, and they were able to include that in some of their newsletters as well. So trying to get it out to, you know, some of their either employees or patrons that we know are likely using this corridor, driving through it, but might be missed by, you know, our email blasts or those postcards.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel member Halliburton.
Yeah, thank you. Tom, a couple of questions. So I've heard a few people talking about this already, and I think that there is some concerns that if you don't go with Concept A, that it may not be able to meet the need, the capacity. But then in response to that, I've been hearing that there is capacity, but the capacity is in the network in general. Can you kind of explain to us what that means a little bit more?
Counsel member Halliburton, absolutely. And it gets complicated really quickly. And so I'll kind of go through a couple of the data points that we found, and please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. You know, the first is, we wanted to really test this theory of, you know, can three lanes actually function from the start? And so we performed a couple modeling analysis, looking out to 2040, really of the whole downtown area. And what we found were, and I think you can see this on some of these streets today, but I'll give a good example, is Whitewater Park Boulevard or Main and Fairview are three streets that have significant capacity today and are expected to in the future as well. And that was really by design. When we worked with the city to build Whitewater Park Boulevard, for example, that was seen as not only a potential relief valve for State Street, but also seeing all of the growth that could happen, you know, at the ICD Headquarters Campus, along Main and Fairview. We were planning to accommodate that for the future. So what we're seeing with some of these modeling analysis is that, you know, upwards of 30% of the trips that are on state today, if we went to a three-lane cross-section, could choose to take that route and sit, especially if they're headed more to, you know, southeast downtown, St. Luke's, maybe further to the east end or Park Center. So that's one consideration that we looked at. You know, additionally, there's this balance of what are we building roads for? Is it for the 15-minute, 30-minute peak congestion time? Or is it for the other remaining 22, 23 hours? And so what's a challenge specifically with this section is there's absolutely a peak time where congestion backs up across multiple signals. But that tends to be in one direction. So it's heavily in the morning, headed downtown. It's actually a little less congested in the evenings because people are more dispersed when they're headed home, or maybe they elect to stay downtown for dinner or, you know, any other activity. And so that's another thing where we've looked at, you know, if we were to move to three, what the modeling is telling us is there's likely going to be a two-to-three-and-a-half-minute delay. But it's really in one direction for that peak, you know, 30 minutes, peak rush hour time in that single direction. You know, I think the other goal, trying to look out, is tying it back to VRT, that as we continue our investments along State Street, both here, but then all the way, you know, to the west as well, can we help encourage people to get out of their vehicles, take VRT instead, take the bus? Or in this case, if we add those, you know, bicycle and pedestrian elements, perhaps they'll choose to bike and walk more as well.
Yeah, I know we're hitting time here pretty close. So with Concept B1, the shared multi-use path, Concept B2, the bike lanes that are on the street, I mean, I think that you brought up a really good point earlier, is that we may not be able to do everything to its best capacity, you know, if we try to get it all on the street at the same time. Can you remind us of the network plan for Bannock? I guess it'll have to be briefly on Bannock and Franklin and what the timelines are with the bicycle network on Bannock and Franklin?
Great. I'm glad you brought that up. So we do have parallel routes to State Street that we've identified as key low-stress bikeways. Franklin, Bannock are the two that were actually, we went through a similar concept study last year, had it adopted by the commission. And I believe right now, in our integrated five-year work plan, they're intended to be built out in 2027, 2028. But that's, you know, we're actively updating that right now. But that's another debate or question that we have, is every street appropriate for every mode? Or is it, you know, beneficial to maybe target those streets for the low-stress bike network and then focus here maybe more in the pedestrian realm or that vehicle realm? You know, another consideration is, are we, if we do the three-lane cross-section, will that then in turn make more vehicles choose to go to Franklin, go to Bannock, go to Jefferson? I think we've seen that a little bit today with just the construction we have going on. But I guess really what I'm trying to say is there's trade-offs with all of these alternatives, and it's something we'll really have to consider.
Thank you. Can you pull up the B2 cross-section? There it is. Thank you. So I think that when you all come back to us in June, it's important for council to be able to give you a firm direction on what we'd like to see happen. One thing I think that would be really helpful for me to be able to make that decision is to have a better idea of what the bicycle facilities are going to look like on Bannock and Franklin. And I've looked into it a little bit. What I see on Franklin, I think, at our particular plan right now is that we're mostly planning, I think, sharrows on a large section of that. What I would encourage ACHD to do and would encourage us to look at is what some of our standards might be. And so like, if we look at this image right here, we can see six-foot bike lanes. And if we aim for six-foot bike lanes everywhere, there's a chance we may not have enough room to get those. And so instead of putting in a smaller bike lane, we put in a sharrow that doesn't necessarily give that level of safety that people want to see. And I guess what would be really helpful for me, especially on Franklin Street, which I think has more room, is if we could explore a smaller minimum standard of like, maybe this doesn't quite get us the six-foot wide bike lane that we want, but maybe it gives us a cycle track that's a total of eight feet wide with four-foot-wide lanes on each direction. And maybe it's slightly substandard, but still gets people that motive travel. Because my nervousness would be, is that if we don't put these nice bike lanes on here and there is more traffic that goes onto those side streets and starts to see more traffic, that people aren't going to feel comfortable riding in those sharrows. So an enhanced bicycle network, again, especially, I think, on Franklin, where there's more room, would be something that would be really helpful, I think, in us making the decision of, does there need to be bike lanes on here, or is there really good adequate bike lanes on one of the neighboring streets?
Happy to provide that. Thank you.
Could you go back to the slide, Tom, on the timeline? Keep going.
The broader.
Yep, yep, yep. Could you talk about what happened in 2023? It seems like there was a pause on the project, probably to do what this slide is suggesting. Could you talk about how that impacted the project? And I have some questions about that.
Absolutely. So the original project was actually from Second Street all the way to 14th. And during that time, we were planning on treating it as a full, complete project. And when the bid awards came out, it was over double what our engineer's estimate was. I want to say it was in the 15th. I want to say it was in the $15 million range to build the entire corridor. That, that largely, I, I think what we were hearing from the development community was concerns related to the complexity of the, the continuous shutdowns, access management, you know, being able to get to those businesses along the corridor if we were going to do the entire thing at once. Also, you know, some of that connection from downtown to the north end. And so at that time, what we, we elected to do was to really break it out into more manageable chunks. And so the project was broken into three different phases. The first was Second to Fourth Street, which has since been completed. The, the second under construction right now between Fourth and Eighth. And then this third one, which we're here today, about Eighth to 14th. The other two were, were much more straightforward, where they were, were really focused on that pavement maintenance, the reconstruction, and then keeping the sidewalks largely where they are today, but adding bulb outs, adding those ADA accessibility improvements. The third one, the, the concept study, there was a lot more, I'd say maybe flexibility with what the design could look like. And so that's where staff and the commission said, you know what? Maybe this is a good time where we can let these other two projects focus on those, get them constructed, but then take a little more time to get this feedback to make sure, you know, the investments that we're building that we're, you know, hopefully not going to touch for 50, 100 years, we're doing it right, we're doing it once. And, you know, we're all feeling good in agreement about that.
Thank you. Could you help clarify something for me? I, I think one difficulty we have with the type of feedback we're getting from the public, people in the north end feel a little trapped, feel a little, don't really know how to navigate downtown right now. I've been texting back and forth with people about, I think you can get out on Third or 14th. And I think the public seeing that we're talking about another project that's probably going to be over the next year, that's a little hard to swallow. And could you help clarify for me the decision to pause this project last year? Did that contribute to extending the length of this? Was this always a two-year project? Could you, could you speak to that, please?
I, I'll try my best. I have to admit, I'm not too sure on the, the previous history. I took this on as the concept study started. But, you know, I, I would, I would just say that there were several lessons learned this construction season. I think we're still learning those, those kind of aches and pains through how to navigate the downtown core. I, I think the benefit of, of waiting until 26 is we can really take the time to, one, make sure that we're coordinating with all our partners, whether it's utilities, whether it's geothermal, whether it's CCDC projects, to make sure that that time line is, the timing of those constructions, those closures, closures are much more succinct, they're together if we can make them. I think the other thing about taking this time through the design is we can really look at, is this something where it's a full closure over that year? Is it something where we can maybe alternate similar to what you see on the intersection of 16th and State right now, where we have it down to two lanes while we're working on kind of the, you know, north and south side of that intersection, more of those partial closer closures to keep things going? Or, you know, do we, do we look at intersection at a time and maybe a, a segment of the, you know, street in between? Taking this time to make sure we're getting it right will really allow, once we've determined that, that determined recommended concept over that design phase in the next 18 months, you know, to figure out what the construction strategy is and how we work with all of our partners to make sure the, the impact isn't as great.
When do you anticipate that ACHD would make decisions around closures related to this construction project?
That would, that would largely take place over the next 18 months.
Okay. Could you go to the, the chart that you have?
Yeah. The trade-offs?
Yeah. The double asterisks. My question is the additional travel time? Do we think that travel time is eliminated if the bus pullouts are included? Or is it partially?
It's, it's partially. And so that's one of the big concerns. One thing that we did with, with our modeling analysis is not only did we look at 15-minute intervals, but we wanted to account for, you know, in 50 years, maybe it's down to seven minutes that we have the State Street bus running. And so what we are seeing, and as you can imagine, with the bus stopping in the travel lane with only one lane in one direction every seven minutes, it was creating a significant backup. So we do see some of that relief by having it pulled out, allowing the traffic to move. What we'll really need to figure out and have our traffic engineers kind of work on is if we go to that bus pullout alternative, how to signal time the, not only the 11th Street intersection, but the 10th and 12th as well, to make sure that that, you know, traffic can move smoothly and the bus is able to get back in during peak times where it might be a little tricky.
Okay. Do we anticipate any more information on that before we would be asked to make a recommendation?
Yep. Yeah. And I think, you know, be happy to, at that next meeting, to really dive deep into more of these trade-offs, you know, specifically what we're seeing in terms of, you know, travel delay or crash mitigation factors, any of that technical analysis we can bring back to.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Hi, Tom. Thanks for all your work. And I really appreciate the collaboration with the city and the, all the public outreach you're doing. I guess to support what Councilmember Halliburton's saying, I, I, I love to see protected bike infrastructure. And I don't know if, you know, adding a few blocks of it on State Street is, is the best place for it. So I guess I would really love to better understand that, that, you know, the nearby bike infrastructure or plans for that. Because I think for me, that would really, really determine, you know, I don't want to pass it up, the opportunity to, to get that good protected bike infrastructure. But if we could do it somewhere else, I think that would be better, I guess. So I'd really rather, really love to better understand that when we get to that decision time. So I just wanted to support that comment. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I had a question in terms of the bus, bus pullouts. Would they be similar to what we see on State Street at Bronco Motors?
The, the stations themselves might look like that. Really what the initial proposal would be for 11th Street is we only have three lanes and we have to have one lane in both directions. So how we'd accommodate the bus pullout there is we, we prohibit left turn lanes on 11th and give that left turn lane now to the bus pullout on either side. And then if you're headed, let's say you're, you're headed into downtown, the bus is pulled out, we'd work with the signal timing on 10th and 11th, where maybe 11th has a longer red, there's a longer green where the traffic can move through, and then the bus can get back in if there's queuing there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. President, just, I guess, one last thing. When you do come back to us, again, I think it would be nice to know specifically Bannock, what our plans are for Bannock and Franklin, if there's the opportunity to enhance any of the infrastructure on Bannock or Franklin, knowing that we might have to use a smaller minimal standard on some of that bicycle infrastructure to get that higher, higher level of comfort. And the other thing that I would request is that when we do have that future work session, I imagine that with all the outreach you're going to be doing, there's going to be so much that we learn from this. And so that we have, make sure that we have plenty of time on that work session agenda or evening agenda when you come to make sure that you've got lots of time to talk because you always have so much great stuff to say and appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. We have Josh here to talk about design review guideline diagnostics from the planning department. Thanks for being here, Josh, and take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I'm here to discuss the recent work that has been done diagnosing and making recommendations on a path forward with our current design guidelines. So for a little background, all commercial office, multifamily, residential, industrial projects are subject to design review process prior to applying for construction permits. Our team uses the Modern Zoning Code, Blueprint Boise, and our two design guideline documents, the citywide design standards and guidelines and downtown design standards and guidelines to evaluate projects for compliance and to influence the built environment's quality and character. These guidelines have been in use since 2013 and have provided largely positive results. Prior to those guidelines, there were really just some aspirational statements in the, in the zoning ordinance about design and compatibility that did not give direct guidance to applicants, to staff, or to our decision-making bodies really about what appropriate design was. Since the creation and adoption of those guidelines, we had have, have had some very successful projects in Boise. I think there has been some concern about some projects, and some of that may be due to the design guidelines. And additionally, with the adoption of the Modern Zoning Code, we do know that there are some conflicting policies and also some areas of overlap between the guidelines and the Modern Zoning Code. So we engaged consultant Opticoast Design out of the Bay Area to take a first step in what may be a guidelines update and rewrite. And that is to produce an analysis and diagnostic of how the current guidelines are functioning and working. So their project scope was to take a look at those existing guidelines, again, both documents downtown and citywide, to identify issues within the guidelines that may be hindering the quality and character of buildings in Boise, and then to provide recommendations to be considered for any future revisions. We engaged Opticoast in October of 2023. They held a kickoff meeting with staff, gathered information, and then went through a round of information gathering that included stakeholder interviews. Those stakeholder interviews were with our design review commission, with some landowners and stakeholders in the development community. And then a call was also put out to ULI for input as well. So they held those interviews, took that information back, and then through about a three-month time period evaluated our current guidelines and produced some recommendations. In April, they did present their preliminary findings to the Design Review Commission at a work session in anticipation of finalizing the document that they produced. So as a first step, the consultant took us, took a step back and really took a look at some design principles that are not captured in our current guidelines or city code, that they felt were aspirational after input from stakeholders and taking a look at our, at our design guidelines. And those were in two areas, pedestrian experience and building design. So these principles were used to evaluate our current guidelines and really take a holistic look at, are the guidelines accomplishing our goals as a city in terms of design and creating the best outcomes? Those are ground floor building design, walkable site design, public frontage design under the pedestrian experience, and then in terms of building design, facade composition, building massing and materials. I think it's helpful to provide a little bit of background on how the current guidelines function when taking a look at any proposed changes. So there is kind of four parts to the guidelines. The first part is, is very much contextual and gives general guidance to applicants about how to proceed. Chapter two is really the foundation of the guidelines, and that is block frontages and the community design framework. So individual streets are designated different types, and we'll get into that in the next slide here. But it's really the framework of how we consider where buildings are placed, the amount of transparency along the street, things like that, are all based off of that block frontage map that's for downtown and the citywide guidelines as well. And then the two detailed sections of guidelines, the site design and the building design, follow that. So for an example, the downtown map, again, here's those designations that create the framework for the guidelines, the red being storefront, the most intense use designation, the one that requires the most transparency, the most activation. Then there's commercial mixed use, landscaped, and other. It's important to note that in the design guidelines, the designation of other carries very little restrictions about building placement or parking placement, which has subsequently been addressed by the Modern Zoning Code, which is part of the need for an update to these guidelines to recognize that some of those aspirational goals and policies have been captured in the Modern Zoning Code. Once you determine a street frontage designation, it then starts to dictate where your building is located. Again, levels of transparency required, activation, door locations, parking lot locations, things like that, with specific standards about how those are accomplished. A really important factor of these current guidelines is anywhere there is an arrow inside that circle, it's called a departure. And departures give the ability to deviate from these very specific guidelines. These are very prescriptive, this section of code or of the guidelines, talking about very specific percentages of transparency, very specific depths of weather protection and where that needs to be. So the departures were provided as a, as a means of being flexible and not being completely prescriptive within the guidelines. An example of some, of a page out of the downtown design guidelines, it's a heavily graphic approach, a lot of do this, don't do this. This particular guideline here talks about tower massing downtown and how to accomplish the guidelines. So diving into the diagnosis of our guidelines and how they are working, the consultant took some recently constructed projects within downtown and the greater city and put them through a matrix to make decisions about how successful the guidelines were in creating the outcomes that we desire. And, you know, this is certainly a brief overview of each of these projects that are going to much greater detail in the document that the consultant produced. The three categories where community regard, based on stakeholder interviews, how is the building received within the community and what is the opinion? How successful were we getting the outcomes we desired? The second one is how closely aligned is the building to the design principles that the consultant created in terms of kind of these overall overarching good standards for design and interaction? And then the final one is, is specifically how in compliance with the guidelines is the finished product? And largely, that's going to surround how many departures were provided within the process. Based on those case studies, the consultant then took in, took an analysis of the individual guidelines. This is really that, that meat of the guideline documents, the specific recommendations when it comes to site design, building design, and the prescriptive standards that buildings need to follow. They took a look at how successfully does the guide and guidelines align with those principles? What did the case studies demonstrate about the guidelines and their success? And then what is the overall diagnosis of each guideline? For example, on building location orientation, and, and within the document, this, this level of analysis is done for each of the guidelines in chapters three and four. But they found that this, this principle does align with the ground floor building design and public frontage design that they identified in their design principles. The new project at Franklin Orchard was very compliant with this guideline and has a positive outcome, while a smaller commercial building on the out, on the outskirts of town was compliant, but does expose some redundancy in the guidelines and maybe those outcomes aren't as successful as we hoped for. And then finally, the assessment part of, of each guideline that they went through, you know, on this one, they did determine that these building and parking lot placement provisions have now been very successfully addressed through the Modern Zoning Code. This is now a redundant standard and may, there may be an opportunity to eliminate this from the guidelines with a rewrite. So moving on to their final piece of, of the document, which is the recommendations, they, they broke that into two kind of categories, big picture recommendations, really kind of philosophical discussions about our approach to design and the design guidelines, and then very specific individual guideline recommendations. For big picture, they did recommend that we take a look at differentiating between landmark and background buildings. So landmark buildings are, you know, things like the, the Capitol Building, the Boise Depot, that are really significant civic generally structures that are landmarks within the community that should be held to the highest of standards. And then what they call background buildings, which is, is the, kind of the rest, right? The infill, what the rest of the community is built there. They still need to be well-designed, high-quality buildings, but there should be a different approach to the design of those structures. So they did recommend that we differentiate between those.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Josh, thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the, the context reinforcing design because one of the things that I often hear, particularly about infill development, is that folks want it to blend into the neighborhood. Particularly if you have a very traditional neighborhood, sometimes a very modern-looking building just might throw things off a bit. Can you talk a little bit about design reviews responsibilities when it comes to that? And then what, what we could do to help that conversation?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts. Design and style are extremely subjective. So, you know, you can get ten architects in the, in the room and then none of them will agree on why there's a good building. So we try try to not dictate style. What we do dictate is compatibility, massing, relationship of of openings in the facade, quality materials. So in terms of like fitting into an existing neighborhood, it's not so much copying what the buildings there now look like. It's really does the building fit in terms of massing? Is its relationship to the street and the pedestrian network similar and appropriate for the neighborhood? Is the parking in the correct place? Things like that. That's a much more accepted way of kind of making sure that contextually new development fits in within existing neighborhoods, because again, you know, style is so subjective that you're not going to get very many people to agree on what they like.
Sounds like attorneys, same joke. So for purposes of just walking through what it would be like for a neighborhood that was going through this, they couldn't, going to design review and saying something like, that's too Brady Bunch, I want it more Victorian, they're not going to touch that. What they're going to look at is very specific criteria in terms of quality.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willits, I think that's an accurate statement. Yes, they're going to look at quality of materials, relationship of of the height and placement of the building within the neighborhood.
Councilmember Corliss.
Thank you, Josh. I had a question in regards to, sorry, let me get back here, on the outcome measured. Who who measured those outcomes for the particular buildings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Corliss. That was the consultant using kind of the metrics that they developed to analyze the guidelines in general. And again, those were that was that community regard. So that was probably the most subjective piece of that is is how did the people that they interviewed feel about those particular buildings?
Do we know how many people they interviewed for those specific ones? And the reason, and Josh, I'll explain why I'm asking this first is because I know the Franklin Orchard, I've heard a lot of people say I I think if you'd asked a lot of people in the area, they're not very happy with the looks and how close it is to the road. And it's just, it's pretty dark and pretty massive right up front being versus more people said, hey, we wish we would have had this towards the back. So I've heard that complaint from a lot of different people. That's why I was surprised to see the community regard green on this project.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, it was around ten individuals that they interviewed on those stakeholder interviews, and and they would have been you know, you know, people that were very much in favor of that style of design, I guess is probably a good way to put it, is that it would have been, you know, architects on the designer view commission, developers within the community, and then, you know, members of ULI who are generally very supportive of buildings against the street density, kind of those things that may have concerned some of the residents.
Okay, so in the community regard, though, sorry, follow up here, there wasn't community members that were engaged. Okay, thank you.
The neighborhood infill context recommendation that they made, I think is very relevant to the conversation we were just having, and it's how do you provide guidance for new development in relation to existing neighborhoods? And their recommendation was that we really need to take a hard look at the new developments allowed by the modern zoning code to ensure that compatibility. Design guidelines approach, this is probably the most philosophical of the discussions, and it's really a way, there's three ways to approach design guidelines. It's prescript, it's performance-based, which you could also call prescriptive. It's, does the proposed building meet standards X, Y, and Z? And they are very specific. Is there thirty percent of windows on the front facade as is the building within ten feet of the sidewalk? So it's, you know, very black and white, objective standards. Form-based is is a kind of in the middle here, and it's it's moving away from those very scriptive standards and more towards what is where is the building located? What is the context? And then negotiated is the probably the most subjective, and it's really a looser set of standards that the board or commission would use to evaluate buildings based on general design principles. Their recommendation was that we need to reduce the amount of form performance standards, increase form-based standards, and then also apply negotiate standards to those landmark buildings, those civic structures that are really the outstanding examples in the community. That's a more complex discussion and and approval process through a negotiated process, but likely appropriate for that level of building. And their final final big picture recommendation was the designer view process. They felt that the designer view commission influences projects too late in the process. This is a challenging one to implement. It would obviously require some code changes and some ways of rethinking our process. I think there are opportunities here to introduce the designer view commission earlier in the process, but we need to vet those. It could be a multi-tiered approval process that you go to a work session that then you move into a conceptual and then final review. So it is possible, but it would take a fair amount of thought and discussion on how to get there.
So Josh, I think I've heard the answer, but if we're moving the design review commission earlier in the process, you're probably going to have to go to the design review commission twice because they need input and then final decision.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. That would be the biggest downfall of this is it would increase the timeline. The second category of these recommendations, and I'll move through these fairly quickly. I know we're running short on time here, is they made very specific recommendations about individual guidelines in three categories, move or remove, and those are some things that we can eliminate due to redundancy within the modern zoning code. Add things that are probably are possibly lacking within our current guidelines. And then change, and those are opportunities to take our existing guidelines and give them some more strength to to get the outcomes we we want. So what implementation looks like is they did identify the need for design guidelines update. It's likely a two-step update. I think we have an opportunity to very easily eliminate redundancy and inconsistency with the modern zoning code. That would be a staff-driven update and could operate on a fairly aggressive timeline. The second part of this timeline is really the big picture recommendations that are going to require public, more public input, a stakeholder focused groups, potentially a consultant to come on board to really kind of rewrite the philosophy of the guidelines. That has a much longer timeline and more difficult to implement. So our recommendation would be to proceed with a quote-unquote cleanup, using the very specific recommendations in their memo of those redundancies, the things that need to be removed and things need to be added with an eye towards a larger rewrite process at a later date. With that, I would stand for any questions. Welcome any comments from the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Willis.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Josh, thanks for the presentation. One of the things that I'd like to recommend is to be very, very clear in these design guidelines, and and I'm thinking back to an instance a few months ago where we had an appeal of a historic district, and I think every one of us had a different view on what was really required. And and we're not the citizen, the citizen who's trying to do it. I mean, we have, we have much more of a of a a knack for what's going on there. So please, please, please be as specific as possible, because I think that'll help everyone know what to expect when they go forward.
Mr. Mayor, pardon the interruption, but I did want to correct the record on Franklin and Orchard. No fault to Josh, he just wasn't part of the community outreach efforts associated with Franklin and Orchard. And the reason I mention it is because I believe it's one of the better examples of the city having multiple community meetings and open houses on a couple of things. One, what that building would look like. I do even believe we asked the community's preference on color and material and layout, and I think the value trade-off, Councilmember Corliss, was the protection of the park versus the visual aspects of that construction. But I'd be happy, because I think it would help in part of this conversation, the better projects we have are done in conjunction with the community that's impacted, and then it gets to the design review process. But that one in particular went on for about six months, and I was part of the committee that selected the developer for that project, and so was a member of that neighborhood association. So with that, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things real quick. One, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the work that went into this.
Are you done, Josh?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious to see some of the the other work from it, just because it seems like such a fun and exciting discussion on how we can shape what some of the buildings look. My hope is that when things come in front of council to that last bullet point, that our developer community already knows all the things that we're looking for. And so they kind of come with them ready to go, and we're not necessarily jumping into that design aspect from from the dais, which never seems to work very well, well, when we do it. And so I just, I wanted to kind of highlight that last bullet point, like, yes, please do reach out to all these folks. They are the experts, the architects, the developers, the builders, and so if they can come with these things looking good, ready to go, in line with what your team has helped put forward, it just makes our job so much easier. So I appreciate all the work on that front.
Josh, so can you help me understand here the the updates? We may entertain a proposal to do a cleanup and then some more intensive work on this at a later time?
Mr. Mayor, that would be our recommendation. There is a opportunity to kind of quickly address some of these issues that the consultant identified. Instead of, you know, undertaking an entire design guidelines rewrite, which could be, you know, a couple of year effort and have a have a price tag attached to it. We feel like we can use those very specific recommendations to do that cleanup right away.
And do you feel like, is that something staff is going to be able to manage on their own, or is that something we'd have to hire a consultant for?
Mr. Mayor, we believe staff can accomplish that.
Okay. And how would you quantify like the the scope and size of of an undertaking like this relative to, say, the modern zoning code rewrite?
Mr. Mayor, it is certainly not the level of the modern zoning code rewrite. I mean, I think that's that's pretty apparent. But we would, we would certainly have a stakeholder focused group and and community, you know, community members brought into that process similar to the modern zoning code. We would have a lot of public outreach, and there is a technical aspect to rewriting, completely rewriting the document in terms of producing graphics, you know, having standardized architectural language and and policies in there. So that part is, is, you know, that's likely a consultant. So that's, you know, there is certainly a cost attached to that.
Do you feel like do you feel like the design guidelines, to me, in some ways, they feel more technical than zoning code? Like zoning code, I can tell you, I want a house there, I want an office there. I know I don't want it seventy feet. I know I want it at least fifty feet. I feel like those are things that are very tangible, and it was easy to communicate with the public on, and stakeholders and community members felt like they could have an opinion on that and it have something. This this feels a little tougher to me, and I wanted to know if that's your experience with design guidelines. Maybe people might have recommend, like, they can look at a building and say what they want out of that, but some of the language that you're using around like how you evaluate the design guidelines is is not language that I feel like general members of the public are actively using. So could you speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, I I agree completely. It is, again, very subjective. It is open to interpretation. It's kind of the challenge that we have experienced in in designing in design review, you know, certainly in the time that I've been with the city. People do know generally what they like, you know, how to express that in terms of writing guidelines and how do you give, you know, guidance to someone who's who's proposing a building on a blank slate? You know, when this, when anything is possible, it's challenging. It it really is, and I think you identified it absolutely correctly in that. When you're talking about the zoning code, we're talking sometimes about very specific numbers and the uses allowed, or it isn't. It's very black and white. The design guidelines are very different than that. They're very subjective. They're subject to and opinions. And I think that's where you know, a consultant that's experienced in developing these guidelines knows how to navigate that world.
When can we expect like a cleanup proposal to council? Do we have a timeline on that? And so you don't have to answer if we don't have one yet?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a timeline developed, but you know, it's somewhere you know, within the year, certainly.
All right. Anything else, Council? Okay, thank you for your time, Josh. All right, folks. Next up, we have Sean Keithley and Jennifer Stevens, one or the other, both of you? Okay. I'd just like to recognize Sean. Sean was a presenter on a panel at the Boise Metro Chamber Conference, and we were very proud to see him there. He had a little ribbon. And we were just, he was really, I don't, I don't, do you still have that? Okay, all right. Yeah, yeah. If you could, next time, we'd appreciate it. Very proud of him. Take it away, Sean.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. It's a, it's a great honor and privilege to be here today to talk about the creative economy and be joined by Arts and History Director, Jennifer Stevens. And I I'd be remiss if I didn't give plenty of credit to Jennifer and her team for the excellent collaboration they have shown and the teamwork that we that we've been able to undertake on this initiative for several years now. And also see Tilly Bub here in the audience, and big shout out to her for all the support along the way as well. She's been a mentor and and someone who I've respected quite a bit on this effort. So what we're here to talk about today, this creative economy, it's not necessarily a new topic. It's not necessarily new for Boise, but it's something that has gained increased visibility and importance, as we've seen creative industries develop here over the past several decades, and especially, I'd say, in the past decade, where we've seen the knowledge economy really grow and the and the cultural and creative piece of that take heightened importance and visibility. We're undergoing something, and we have been undergoing something as a as a world economy for for a while now, and it's often been referred to as a little buzzwordy, but the Fourth Industrial Revolution. This is a knowledge economy. This is the way that people work now. The the rapid progress of technological change and the things that are valued now as economic assets are different than they were, say, fifty years ago. And things like innovative and advanced manufacturing, the things that we have here in Boise, their underpinnings of our economy are the elements of the future that will be a big part of what we call very broadly the creative economy, and we'll get into all the other parts of it that are so vital as well. But I just want to set the stage by helping us understand, helping us all understand sort of the breadth of what this this thing is when we talk about it. Our city has a growing abundance of creative assets that have contributed to its ability to attract high-quality jobs and the creative workers that have turned made Boise an attractive place to live and work. So as a city, we're well-positioned, and we have a great opportunity in front of us to support our creative assets, not only to benefit our economic health, but also broadly support our mission to be a city for everyone through an inclusive and intentional approach. So getting back to that mission quickly. The mission as as we see it here really speaks to what we're what we're talking about when we think about the creative economy. We're talking about the mission to create a city for everyone, to embrace our community and its decision-making process and the creative act that that represents. The innovation that it takes to invest in things that we value, like our environment and our our all the quality of life assets that we have, and then how that all comes back together to ensuring that we have a thriving local economy that benefits it all, benefits us all. And it's this collective creativity that goes into this that leads to everything from how we imagine and build our public spaces and the built environment to how we attract a talented and increasingly mobile workforce to the city of Boise. So with that, what is the creative economy? When we think about it, we think about three main things. We think about the creative industries. Those are the the jobs, the the workforce, the people who represent those jobs, and and in many cases, the entrepreneurs that are part of that too, and the infrastructure that binds it all together and makes it possible. The Americans for the Arts definition is essentially a a cultural or creative ecosystem. And we can say that this ecosystem is comprised mainly of these three things, and that it generates economic activity based upon individuals and organizations who use their creativity to drive jobs, revenue, community resources, and cultural engagement. And here in Boise, it shows up in everything from our, you know, our our employers, large and small, our public spaces, the built environment, architecture and design, and of course, our vibrant art scene. So it's really, it's really everywhere. It permeates just about everything here in Boise. Not to overstate how important it is, but it's a Not to overstate how important it is, but it's certainly significant. So getting into what the creative industries are that represent the economy. Generally, we're talking about industries that, you know, as, as we say up here, they require individual creativity. They require skill and talent. They have a potential for job creation through the creation of intellectual property. And these are things that don't often fall neatly in a box of creative economy, creative industry. These, these are things that often traverse definitions of what it is to be creative and, and traverse definitions of various sectors. So you have things that you might more traditionally think about when you think about the creative economy. You have music and performing arts, for example. You have film and, and video and visual arts and design, the things that show up in those creative venues like museums. But you also have things that are equally as important in, in underpinning the economy and in creating those jobs and attracting the workforce that we need to, to support it, things like software design. And then the things that people just enjoy as part of the city fabric, culinary arts and food, something not often mentioned as part of the creative, creative economy, but equally is vital. And then you have the, sorry about that. You have the creative workforce, the people that support these industries and that, again, we work to attract as part of our, our workforce development efforts. And these are the, the owners and the employees of the, of creative businesses. They're, they're, they're often self-employed creative workers. In fact, in Boise, a lot of the entrepreneurs and, and folks who are part of the creative economy, up to 50% are, are self-employed. You have your contractors and gig workers, people who are part of a less traditional system of work. And then just noting that this is for folks in the creative economy, it's often not their primary job. That speaks partly to the wages that a lot of, a lot of creative jobs frankly pay or don't pay and require a second or third job to support. So the, the person who running, who's running your sound or lighting designer to show a Tree Fort Music Hall, you know, the next morning you might see them as your banker. I use that example because my banker actually is a, a sound designer. So it's interesting to see how folks show up in the creative economy and, and how they represent parts of our whole economy that aren't necessarily directly connected. But when you look at it this way, they, they certainly are. And, and then the creative infrastructure, the thing that, that sort of binds it all together. So we're talking about, of course, the, the venues where creativity shows up. And these can be formal or, you know, what you call more formal venues. So let's just say that, you know, the Morrison Center or the Egyptian Theater. We're informal venues where these things happen, but you don't necessarily plan for them happening there. Like, you know, the Boise Public Library, for example, incubators and accelerators, Trailhead, great example of what we have here in Boise that represents that. Public art, of course, and the public spaces where you often see that public art. And the cultural sites that we have here at the City of Boise, I've called out Irma Hayman House and James Castle House is just a couple of those. And then the educational infrastructure that we're lucky enough to have here, Boise State University, for example, the, the Venture College. You also have the, the School for the Arts and, and a, and a great program they have there, which is an entrepreneurship certificate that helps to augment folks in fine arts and other arts programs and helps to, help them to understand how they can be entrepreneurs in that space. And, and just one more note about the creative infrastructure and sort of the tying together piece. These things that, the, the infrastructure that allows these, these, these things to happen within it are where we, where, where it's been called that the creative collisions happen that often occur when you have places that have concentrations of these cultural assets and where people and especially creatives are generally drawn to. And our downtown and our neighborhood centers are particularly, particularly rich in these things that allow these creative collisions to happen. For any of you who, who might have attended last year's DPA's Downtown Boise Association State of Downtown, Speaker there mentioned our downtown specifically is a place where we're just really well uniquely positioned for those things to occur. And for the, the right conditions to allow the, allow creativity to thrive and allow the economy that comes out of that to, to come together. He also noted that, that communities that embrace creativity and innovation, they prioritize quality of place, things like walkability, things like affordable housing, mixed-use development. This is where you begin to see the importance of, of what we've done on other efforts, like the, the, the work that you just heard Josh Wilson talk about. And of course, the modern, modern zoning code, which helps to set the stage for how you prepare the creative infrastructure to, to support the economy in your city. So I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing and try to move through these quickly. There's a lot going on here. But as I mentioned in the beginning, we've, we've worked hard to collaborate across departments. You know, a lot of that happening with Arts and History, but, and Jennifer will speak more to this as, as she presents. But there's, there's a lot happening with programs, 1% for our programs, for example, in, in Public Works and the airport. So it's, it's important to note that cross collaboration across our city organization is critical for the work that we do as we work around this initiative. Externally, it's, a lot of it's about activating partnerships. It's the placemaking work that we've worked to do with the Downtown Boise Association, with other partners like CCDC and the investments that have come from that, the incredibly robust partnership that we've worked to build with them to, to build creative assets into the fabric of our, of our city. Tree Fort, of course, another great example of that partnership. And then Trailhead. Speaking of Trailhead, so one of the main programs of Trailhead, Boise Entrepreneur Week, for the first time in its history, will have a creative track and it will feature creative entrepreneurs and other folks in that space who maybe haven't had as much of a voice or much of an opportunity or have seen their place in, as an entrepreneur or in Boise Entrepreneur Week. And allow them to, to, to compete with and, and, and show with, with all the rest of the entrepreneurs in that, in that event. So I know there's a lot of excitement around that and, and, and folks are looking forward to it this year. I'll note a couple of other things that we've done recently. So the Music Policy Forum, first time ever in its history. This is an organization out, out of DC that came to Boise. I think several of you were a part of it. I know Councilmember Halliburton was a part of it as well. And the Cascadian Music Summit that accompanied that focused around how to build thought leadership and policy around things like how you cultivate a music economy or creative economy in your city and getting all the right folks in the room to, to do that, everyone from the artists themselves to, to venue owners, to public policy folks, to impact investors and, and putting thought to what it takes to build a, a great creative ecosystem in a city. We've hosted a couple of joint internships just last year in partnership with Arts and History. Put together a nice work product out of that, which currently is a, is a white paper, but I know our staff have been referencing quite frequently, quite frequently when it comes to helping to understand how we might take some of that work forward and more formally build upon it. I know Jennifer will speak to that here in a minute. Community leadership, working with Boise School of the Arts on their advisory board, City Club being actively involved in discussions around the creative economy. Tree Fort and organizing convenience as part of that event. I'll just list off these other ones quickly. Our Film Ordinance, proud of the work done there. Pure City visits, a lot of interest in looking at what our creative infrastructure is and how we, how we do that and how our leadership has, has really made that a priority. And then I'll, I'll let Jennifer speak more to the CCDC investments we're proud of and the co-investment that we've made in the Creative Vitality Software Suite, which has allowed us to look at the, the actual metrics of this work. And speaking of metrics, so why does it matter? A few metrics on how we, how we measure up here in Boise as measured by this Creative Vitality Software Suite that we have. It happens, it happens at Boise is, is measured as 39% more creative or more creatively vital than the national average. We're 136% higher by the way than the rest of Idaho. And I'll try to keep that, try to stay humble there. And, and we also show up well in the MSA. It's something that has remained fairly stable over the past decade. But so I used to say that it shows Boise's strength as a place for creativity where folks are drawn to. Again, the location quotient, another measure of how we are measured against our region or, or larger area. Arts and Entertainment happens to be the top location quotient of any major industry sector. We have over 14,000 creative jobs in Boise. That's, I believe, around the, the total number of employees of, of an organization like St. Luke's. And then another 10,000 in the rest of the Boise MSA. And then a number of creative occupations that show up well, software development, architecture and engineering design. And then the other more traditional creative occupations. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Director Stevens to speak more about what we're doing and what other communities like us are doing in this space.
Thanks so much, Sean, and good evening, Members of the Council and Mr. Mayor. So as Sean mentioned, Boise is already at a really good place. And I'll just spend a few minutes, I'm going to fly through some of this and actually skip a little bit because I think we're running short on time. Always happy to chat with any of you individually and very much appreciate your support and interest in the work that, that we're doing in this space. Nurturing the creative economy really helps facilitate a concept that you've probably heard me talk about called placemaking. And that idea is really the effort to make sure that visitors and residents alike know that they're actually in Boise. So if you think about going to a strip mall and sitting down at a Chipotle, you really could do that any place in the entire United States and not actually know where you're sitting. Because it looks the same, it feels the same, it is the same no matter where you are. In Boise, you're going to find a pink tree, you're going to find a foothills, you're going to find somebody fly fishing in the river near a pedestrian bridge, near a university. Those are things that make Boise specific and unique and an actual place. And people flock to those places when you create unique places, including economic development. So in the next couple of slides, I'm going to talk, share some details about the concept of creative districts. And as I mentioned, I am going to fly through these and actually maybe skip a little bit so that we don't go past. But in the, in the past, I think it's important to understand that this concept of creative economy is new in the sense that in the past nonprofits have really cornered the market, if you will, on the concept and on owning really anything that they believed was really genuinely fine art and quality art. And creative economy really expands that, right? Because by creating a distinction between commercial art and nonprofit creativity, it's really a, a false distinction. And it really prevents the kind of collaboration that we need in this space and, and doesn't allow us to, to create the kind of cultural collisions or the creative collisions that, that Sean talked about earlier. And it's as important today, or maybe more important than ever, to recognize both the nonprofit sector and the commercial sector as being contributors to the creative economy. So the creative district concept in these cities that I'm going to talk about here has become a tool for bringing these two sectors together and serving not just as a magnet for nonprofits, but also for for-profit businesses that are centered in the creative economy. Businesses like advertising, multimedia, gaming, culinary arts, et cetera. So I'm probably just gonna, I'm going to skip Little Rock and I'm going to go straight to our, our cities that are a little closer by. Salt Lake's Creative Industries Zone started in 2017. It began organically in an industrial area of town that offered flexible and inexpensive space for arts. Lots of startups were there, craftspeople, et cetera. Creative work really flourished in that area. And Salt Lake kind of zoomed in and realized that there was some placemaking to do there and some real opportunity. That effort involved the activation of the space. They have an annual mural festival where they select artists. And it has resulted in a space where there are more than 50 murals actually created in this neighborhood. And it's really, I mean, if you go online and you look at it, it's just amazing the number of murals that they have there. And that, that level of visual interest and place activation has drawn economic development to that area. A company by the name of Essence came there in 2019 and specifically chose this space because they recognized that there was a, an alignment in the commitment that Salt Lake had to culture and innovation and the values of the business. The business itself is a media, advertising, campaign, analytic, kind of creative business. But they wanted to create and be a space to attract a workforce that had the same values that they did. So again, this is a place where creative collisions can really happen when you intentionally create place. Colorado also has a more mature creative district program run by the state's Economic Development Office. I suppose that may not be a surprise when you look at how Colorado has developed and, and its maturity. But the state itself really does recognize the economic value of art, culture and the creative sector. The Golden Triangle is one of the creative districts that has taken advantage of this program. It's celebrated in downtown Denver as an international district and a real cultural destination. It encourages urban revitalization, economic development. It has, it's, it's 45 city blocks, so it's absolutely enormous. And it is home to more than 500 businesses and institutions. And in part, that's because of the cultural institutions that are anchored there as well. So the Denver Central Library is there, as well as the Denver Art Museum and a dense collection of public art in the area. So together, again, that creative collision has, has come into this space and you have that, that blend of nonprofits and commercial sector as a way to really encourage that flourishing of creativity. So what are we doing in Boise to ensure that we support the creative economy in addition to some of the things that Sean already mentioned? So the Department of Arts and History has been working closely, both with the Mayor's Office, as well as other departments across the city, including Planning and Development Services. So one of the things that's been great is that the PDS and the Mayor's Office has really been focused on making sure that in the housing developments that happen, that there are some amenities that include culture. And so we've been in conversations, the, the housing folks and the staff, the various staffs have been bringing our department in to discuss art projects, to encourage developers and, and work with them on potential projects. Not necessarily led by the city, but taking advantage of the knowledge base in the Department of Arts and History's staff to assist those developers in making those amenity-rich places for people to live. In the last year, the City Council has, has invested as well in Public Works and the Boise Airport. Each of the enterprise funds has invested in a full-time person that is focused exclusively on public art coordination in those two enterprise funds. So at the Boise Airport, of course, that person just started, we're really pleased to welcome Savannah to the staff just about a month ago. And she's focused exclusively on placemaking at the airport. Our Public Works Public Art Coordinator is working on putting art throughout the city that communicates really complex concepts about climate change and some of the environmental initiatives that we have here in the city to be energy efficient and, and otherwise. Meanwhile, the City of Boise has made other deep investments in the creative economy as well.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you, Jennifer. I had a question on that last one. So when we're looking, when we say, and the possible, impossible new creative districts, like in our heads, does that mean an urban renewal district that we put a lot of extra focus on increasing arts and those types of things when we do that sort of master planning process? Like, can you explain to me kind of technically what that might look like? Or if we're not there yet, we can put that in the parking lot and visit it later?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Halliburton, I'm happy to discuss that. Yeah, I was going to get to that. The creative districts are actually a brand new, this is the first year rearing of it. It's a brand new pilot program. We're working with the Idaho Commission on the Arts. And the reason that I brought up Denver and Salt Lake was to sort of give you that context. So we're going to be piloting an effort with the Idaho Commission on the Arts to plan for our own creative district here in the city. It is not an urban renewal district at all. It's not, it's not going to have any land use, you know, overlay, any sort of regulations or restrictions. Really, it's a marketing effort to identify space through wayfinding and that sort of thing so that we can in fact encourage economic development and encourage other creative industry and creative economy businesses and otherwise nonprofits too, to come into a particular space that is recognized officially as a particular district.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. In addition to that, and I'm going to finish, if it's okay with you guys, I'm going to flip to the last slide here. Because I want to let you know that we are in the process of updating our cultural plan. So the cultural plan that currently exists at the City of Boise is from 2017. So it's time for an update. And we have actually made a decision that we're going to be calling it the Cultural and Creative Industries Plan to reflect the fact that this landscape and the ecosystem has changed pretty dramatically and that the ecosystem of Boise has changed dramatically since 2017. So there are two things we're doing foundationally as we move toward that work. And of course, Tilly Bub is going to be leading that effort from our department. We're going to be, number one, surveying the community, both organizations as well as individuals. That'll happen through an actual survey and then also with some focus groups that we're planning on doing between now and the end of the calendar year. But we're also going to be doing asset mapping. And that work started last year with the interns that Sean referenced earlier. They did a fantastic job of that. And now it's time to dig a little bit deeper. The value of doing asset mapping is, is multiple, but basically by But basically, by defining and quantifying both our creative workforce as well as the venues that we have in and throughout the city, we're able to identify some of the gaps as well as identify what we can do as a city, as conveners, to assist with this work that's going on in the community. We also are really interested in mapping our public art investments. And Councilwoman Corliss knows that we've actually also begun this work. But we want to do it in a little deeper way and identify where there might be some cultural deserts throughout the city and try to focus where we put our public dollars, our investments, to make sure that we can be as all-inclusive as we can as we reach out into our community and try to create a city for everyone. So with that, I just want to thank you all again for your attention and interest in this subject. And I'm sure that both of us are happy to stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. I just wanted to echo my support of this work. We talked about it at Arts and History Committee meeting. And I know personally, when people come to Boise, one of the things I love to take them to is the river and the Saturday Market, both the Capital City Market and the Farmers Market. And it's always a marvelous time. They get such a taste of Boise, not only of our kindness, but also just the kind of art and amenities that are here. And I think it's really important that we create a sense of place in all the parts of our city. So I'm very, very excited for this and just that I'm also really thrilled about the art project that we're going to have in West Boise that celebrates our history as farmers and apple orchards and all the things that we have to celebrate here. So can't wait to see more.
Yes, and just thank you, Councilwoman Willetts. Yes, the artwork that's going to be installed in Redwood Park is going to be really exciting. So we're really happy about that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, great work. I'm always excited to figure out how we can become more open and welcoming to creatives and entrepreneurs, how we can keep them in Boise, keep them from going to other places, Garden City. And although we appreciate all the work being done in Garden City, we'd like to figure out what we can keep doing, you know, around Boise as well. Just a couple of things that I wanted to put on the radar. When it comes to asset mapping, one of the things I hope that we can continue to look at is events that we have around town as cultural assets. We have so many great ones in downtown Boise. I hope we continue to have so many great ones in downtown Boise. And what are the assets that we have in events in other parts of the city? You know, we can think of things like our Neighborhood Concert Series and how that can activate some other spaces. And if we can continue to do that over time, how these new spaces kind of emerge in different parts of the city as well. And I think that that's going to be one of the challenges that a lot of our nonprofits and for-profits face going forward is the cost and complexity of these events. And I hope that we, as a city, can figure out ways where we can work with these organizations that are trying to host these events all over town and trying to figure out how we can sort of streamline that process. It's been so great to work with CCDC, who does such a great job. I think it's sort of leveraging our creative community. I can think of specifically on Grove Street, when we looked at turning this into an event block, and we actually brought in a creative stakeholder group to give input on public infrastructure design. That's something that I would love for us to continue to explore, whether it's in parks or different types of things that we're building, bringing that creative community into the planning process so that when we're building a new Redwood Park, there's a great place to plug in a stage and things that we can use electricity instead of generators and all those different types of things. And so I would just encourage us to engage our creative community on that. And CCDC, I think, has served as a really great model. And then the very last thing, I just want to compliment you, Director Stevens, for attending the Teen Mental Health Awareness Meeting that we had yesterday. I think this conversation is such a great fit there. Because when we're mapping out our cultural assets, what are the things that we're doing for teens? Are there deserts and activities for our teens as well? And as we're building a creative economy, how can we make sure that our teens are really included in that process as well? Because I think if they're in there from the beginning and if they can see that meaning, we can address some of those mental health concerns, get them built into that cultural asset map. So again, thank you for all the hard work and just a couple of bullet points there to flag that I would love to support if there's any way that I could from council.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. I think we're going to wrap this up so we can get started at 6 o'clock on time tonight. Do you have a parting comment about how enthusiastic we are?
You know, I had to get on the mic once during this work session today. So, but Director, I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing. Very, very excited about the mapping. I just want to point out as a comment how cool this is. You mentioned Salt Lake, activating spaces that weren't active before. You know, just thinking about the Idaho Film Society, what do you do with an old bus station? And like, that open house is coming up soon. And just how exciting that is to create a new industry that has not existed before in this space. So all the work that's just going in and that mapping is going to be really, really cool. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you at 6.